May 20th, 2020. Please note on March 18th, 2020, Illinois Governor JB Pritzker issued an executive order, 2020-07, which declared that during the-
You can just read this script, Max, on the sheet I gave you.
Oh, sorry. I guess I don't have to go through the whole part. Before I call roll, I wanted to thank everyone for being here tonight, including those people who are attending remotely and for those who are watching on Channel 14 streaming or streaming live. As noted at the top of the agenda, the governor has issued an executive order in March that allows the commission members to participate remotely. Tonight, Commission Member Chris Doe has called in for those in attendance. Tonight, we have set up the room to meet CDC-recommended distancing guidelines and executive orders from the governor. The city has also made several accommodations for the public to provide comments on the agenda items. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order today, May 20th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Becker, Buckley, O'Flaherty.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Doe.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Chair Maxwell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I'd like to ask for the approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions?
I move approval.
Moved by Klein?
Second.
Seconded by O'Flaherty. Roll call, please.
No roll.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So passed. Next, I'd like to ask for the approval of the minutes from April 22nd, 2020. Any additions or deletions?
I move approval.
Moved by Jerry?
Second.
Seconded by Klein. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. This is the public participation portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak to anything that is not on the agenda may come forward, state your name and address at this point. Any comments? Okay. With that, I'd like to move to new business. Public hearing, petition by Christina and Matt Gerke for approval of the rezoning of 421 Grove Street from the CBD Central Business District to the PDC Planned Development Commercial District and approval of the preliminary and final development plan to accommodate a building, contractor's office, and material storage on the subject site. If you'd like to address, please state your name and your address.
I'm-- can I take my mask off?
Sure.
I'm Matt Gerke. My wife Krista Gerke is also here. We live at 15568 Route 23, DeKalb, Illinois. And we're here to petition the city to allow us to build a fence on the property. So, we also own a construction company, a nine-year-old construction company in Sicomore, Illinois. And, you know, through-- just through growing and the growing process, we've kind of outgrown our current facility. So, you know, I'm a DeKalb guy. We actually live on Route 23, like we said, and I went to high school here. So, I've always kind of had our eye on the building, and then all of a sudden, one day, we drove by and it just kind of dinged that would be the perfect place for us to have our office. It has the warehouse on one side of it, and then also, too, to be more client-friendly, it also has the office side of it, and it'll help us address our growing staff. And we bought the company on March 13th, and on March 16th, the state shut down, so it kind of slowed things down a little bit, but we anticipate it picking back up again. So, on the screen, it shows in yellow the proposed fence area. The top of the screen would be the alley kind of by the drive-through for the facilities up north of us, and then the fence down along Fifth Street, and then coming back over flush with the front corner of the building to kind of just square that whole back area off. So, what we'd put in there would be, you know, concrete forms or parked trailers, you know, stuff that we couldn't get inside of the building, you know, skid loaders. You know, if the guys are going out, you know, the next day and they got stuff staged, it would be in that fenced area to keep everything along Grove Street, the front portion of Fifth Street clear, and then along Forest Street, we wouldn't have any-- anything out there. We would park in front of the building. I think there's a number six down there. I think there's 20-some spots, and, you know, right now, we've got four people in the office. Hopefully, maybe someday, it'd be up to five or six. So, with that being said, the fence, the fences that we're looking at, that would be, hopefully, something that we could settle on for a few reasons. It's corrugated metal siding. It has a 40-year paint warranty on it. And also, too, it could be constructed in a way to facilitate easy repairs, you know, say, were to get spray painted, or say that somebody were to run into it, or one of the guys porks a fork through it with a forklift, you know, we could take a sheet off, put the sheet back on. And if there's any wood, it would be womanized wood, ACQ outside-treated, pressure-treated. So, if something were to break, it could easily and quickly be replaced. And then, if we could build something like that, I'd probably order, you know, maybe 10 extra panels, too, to kind of make sure that we had, you know, the same color throughout. But we work with this material a lot at our company, and, like I said, the warranty on the paint's 40 years, and it just stands up great. With this, we'd probably have-- because I think we're required to put some landscaping on the outside. We'd probably put some splash plank on the bottom, you know, maybe foot, so if any mulch came in contact with it, it wouldn't, you know, blow underneath. And then, maybe on the top, to dress it up a little bit, we'd put another row of wood along the top of it, and maybe like a little ornamental corner post on each, every eight feet down along the length of the fence, just to kind of dress it up a little bit. So, that would be, you know, the juxtapose of the fence. And then, I think there's another option of-- so, that's a basic, you know, chain-link fence. We put those up all the time, too. They definitely have their place. There can be a little bit of maintenance in them. That vinyl on the inside does, it tends to break down, but also, that can be replaced. You know, eight-foot tall, I think there's a fence around the back now that's about eight-foot tall, so it would match that. You know, that'll keep, it'll really, I don't think we would see anything inside the fenced in area with the eight-foot-tall fence up, plus it'll prohibit, you know, neighbors or kids from jumping over the top of it. And that right there is another, just kind of an example of a corrugated metal fence, but it just has the-- the fence panels are more between the posts than flush with the posts. So, that would just be, the fence would be set inside of a post. You'd see a post, you know, trimmed out, and then, you know, more fence behind it. So, that's the third example. And really, with our business, you know, guys don't make money hanging out at the shop, so we don't have, there won't be a lot of guys, you know, in and out of there every day, mostly just the office people. You know, maybe every now and then, we'd see a little bit of activity in and out of the gate. So, as far as a presentation, that's kind of about all that we have. We do have to do, I think we put some landscaping. I think the city has some requirements. I think on the right side of there, it says 17 shrubs, which could be like the arborito trees, or different smaller, shorter shrubs. And that would also help break up the monotony of, or what could be considered the monotony of the fence along Fifth Street there. And I think we'll also, to kind of balance that off and dress up the front of the building, put some shrubs along Forest Street, and then, obviously, clean up the landscaping that's been dilapidated for the building that's been empty for seven years. So, we're really looking forward to hopefully get approval on this and be good neighbors and work with everybody in the city.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
City presentation?
Yes, there's a staff report in your packets. The applicant went over what's being proposed. The Swedberg Associates proposing to move this location. It's owned Central Business District, and then the CBD doesn't specifically mention contractor's office with material storage as a permitted or special use. In addition, there's some restrictions on outside storage in the downtown district. So, advise the applicant they need to rezone it to the Planned Development Commercial District, so that is a request. The request is not specifically for a fence. It's rezoning from the CBD to the Planned Development Commercial District. Within that district, you can request any waivers. There's a plan approved as part of the rezoning, which they did submit, which is up on the screen. They are requesting, which we've approved before, Planned Developments, less than two acres require waiver. They're a little under two acres for the site, 1.2 acres, so that's waiver. We've granted those in Cornerstone Plaza, DeKalb. The site has, the building's been for sale since 2013, so it's been underutilized. There's actually some tenants in there now, not used very much. There's an engineering firm that uses it as a field office occasionally. There's an architectural person in there, but only for storage. And then, there's a pest control operation, too. The owner does rent out the inside of the building to vehicle, RV, boat storage, but it's underutilized. Most of the time, there's no cars out there, as you can probably see when you drive by. The outdoor materials storage area, as noted by the applicant, will be in the area, the yellow shows the fence location, eight-foot-high fence. They have all the storage in there, inside, or in the outside storage area enclosed by the fence. No storage will be allowed anywhere else on the property. They talked about the different options for the fence. The staff recommending option one, that was described with the corrugated metal and the wood framing and wood post. We do have a third option, which I'll go over a little bit. The second option is the chain-link fence with the slats, which we don't recommend. That's a maintenance issue, and you can kind of see through those, so we don't recommend that. This was the third one that was presented tonight. The applicant went through kind of, it's not flush, it kind of goes back and forth. Pretty durable, but that's the third option, too. So, the applicant's proposing, and the staff would agree, but this is one certainly to consider, too, and kind of looking for the commission's direction a little bit on it. As noted, too, the landscaping, they're going to propose, we asked for some, with these sites where we have a rezoning or special use, it's an existing site, we're trying to look to get some additional items done to bring it more in compliance with the UDO. In this case, we're asking for some landscaping to be planted next to the fence on South Fifth Street, so there is, as you can see up here. So, we do, that would be in compliance with the UDO. And we also ask the applicant to provide some landscaping next to Forest Street. I do have a street view that was in your packet. As you can see, to the right is the site, and we're looking north on Forest Street, Route 23. Very little landscaping there, so here's a view. We're going to get some, asking for some shrubs in this little landscaped area between the sidewalk and the curbing, or the parking area, to kind of get some buffering there a little bit. So, trying to bring the site a little more into compliance, certainly not required, but with the rezoning, we want to ask for a few more things to help increase the appearance of the site. And the applicant is proposing improvements to the building, the inside, and also some other items that I'll go over a little bit. Parking is, there's a certain number required based on the use per our UDO. As you can see, there's the site here, there's parking, and we're going to have them restripe it, so it's clearly indicated up here. There's 18 spaces required per our formula and our ordinance. The applicant does have 22 marked spaces, and again, we're going to have them mark those a little bit better. There's a handicap space that is blocked by a bush, that we're going to have them remove the bush, so it's clearly, easily seen and meets the state accessibility code. Also, we'll have them paint the, there's light poles in the parking lot. Probably this one best sees it, that's not been maintained very well, so we're going to have them paint those, so it looks a little better. So, trying to get some site improvements to the property. Clean up, as the applicant indicated, clean up the landscaping, the underbrush on the site, new plantings. Any rezoning? We have standards for zoning map amendment, and those are indicated in your staff report. Look at what the comprehensive plan recommends, the surrounding land uses, surrounding zoning. As I mentioned, the, or the comp plan calls for commercial on the property. It's been for sale since 2013, so for the most part, not been utilized very well. So, this would be good use for the property. They're going to screen the outdoor area with a fence and landscaping, complies with their UDO in all respects. They are getting a waiver, or asking for a waiver for a planned development under two acres. Won't have a detrimental effect on the surrounding neighborhood. There's a course of mix of uses in the area from automotive repair, of course, the theater across the street, commercial, retail, service uses to the north, of course, City Hall this across the street, and larger parking lot to the west. As of the posting of the agenda last Friday, we hadn't received any public comments, written comments into the city. There's a sample motion prepared. We recommend approval. We do recommend, as shown here, the option one on the fence, but please consider the option three to fence if you feel that's more appropriate for this location, and that can easily be changed in the motion, up to the commission. Exhibit C is the conditions. Just briefly go over that. All storage of materials must be indoors or within the eight-foot-high fenced area shown on the exhibit, which of course is planned here. No stacking of construction materials higher than eight feet. Then also, the filing items should be completed within 30 days after the occupancy of the building. Removal of the large brush, a bush in front of the handicap, accessible parking, stripe the required number of parking spaces in compliance with the UDO, the municipal code and the state accessibility code. Clean up existing landscape areas and remove the underbrush on the site. Plant the minimum of 17 shrubs along South Fifth Street, planting 10 shrubs along South Forest Street, and also paint the parking light pole. So, those are the conditions with the recommendation.
Thank you, Dan. If there's anyone that would like to speak to this item, please come forward and state your name and address.
DeKalb, Illinois, and 424.5 East Lincoln Highway. I had just a couple of questions for Mark. One was concerned about traffic pattern as your crews leave the site. I don't recommend the alley. 7:30 to 8:45, you might as well just forget it. I would like to see you do the third choice on the fence. I think it'd be more aesthetically nice, especially the Stagecoach Theater. That was my biggest concern, is your traffic pattern. It is quite congested in that alley. The city made some very poor recommendations with that drive-through. They violated their own city codes doing it. They did not tell me the entire truth, so be careful. Make sure you get it in writing, because they said they were going to make another lane for the drive-through, and their own code says 12 feet for a lane, and I'm sure you know all about that, working in construction. And they made two lanes out of 16 feet, and 30 days later, cut 12 inches off of that. And why you need cement pylons in front of a brick garbage container, I don't know. But now, you have no possible way of two vehicles passing in that alley. So, be careful. 7:30 to 8:45, there's a lot of drive-up traffic for Dunkin' Donuts, and you're going to find the pattern again, starting about 2:45, 3 o'clock, all the way to about 4:30. So, I'd recommend your crews come in off of Grove or something other than that alley, because it's not friendly anymore. It just isn't. I'm happy to see someone takes some interest in this property. I'm concerned about the inside of the building because of what people have told me about black mold in there. And I'm concerned that when you're, if that's what it is, and I do not know, that you take care of it in the proper way. Because I know past projects, I don't think city code was on ball on the track, because I know when the development for the subway and such, and they redid the sewers, I know they pulled pure asbestos out of those old sewer lines, and I never saw any proper disposal of it. In fact, it disappeared on a weekend. Sat there for three weeks and disappeared on a weekend, and the gentleman who told me what it was was a head of Northern Environmental Control. And he said, "You know what it is?" I said, "I have no idea." They pulled it out of the sewer. He says, "Pure asbestos, something they did back in the 50s and 60s," I understand. So, your property is knowing that, so you don't have to worry. The sewers have all been fixed, and welcome to the neighborhood if we make this work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward and state your name and address.
I'm Louise Keldere, only live at 308 South Third. It's interesting you mentioned traffic. For me, I didn't really understand the project, but I'm concerned about increased traffic, especially on Franklin, between First and Fourth, which I've seen more and more semis coming through, which may be going to the area where the man was talking, gentleman was talking about with Dunkin' Donuts and all that, you know, deliveries. It's kind of a nice shortcut, Franklin, between First and Fourth, and I'd be concerned if I started to see a lot more construction traffic coming through there, you know, trucks and construction vehicles. It's just an easy place to do that, and I don't know. I may be misunderstanding it as less storage and more movement, but in my mind, I thought there'd be a lot of more movement of vehicles, which is a concern for me where I live, Third, right near Franklin.
Maybe the applicant could explain the amount of traffic going in and out, Dave.
Thank you, Louise.
Yeah, so we have four, five staff, or four staff members in the office, and so really, that would be the traffic that you would see working out of the office portion of the building. And then, like I said, guys don't make money hanging out at the shop, so we try and have our crew go to their jobs at the beginning of the day. You know, maybe they have to run back, you know, once, twice a day, or, but the traffic will be minimal disturbance from our company.
Could you, will there be access onto Fourth Street?
Probably, we'd use the Grove Street access the most. And then, as Dan mentioned, that we've seen, we've noticed the traffic in the alleyway, and, you know, I don't want my guys sitting in the drive-through waiting to turn into the gate, so we'd probably use the Grove Street access the most. With the parking lot, it'll give us position to, if we need to turn a trailer or something around, there's plenty of room off the street to back in to where the gate would be, which would be up at the, on the Grove Street side of the building, flush with the front, yep. So, that's probably where the main gate would be. Probably have a gate along the alley, too, you know, in case we did have a break in the day or something, or we could wheel a truck and trailer if we wanted to get something inside. Probably, that'd probably happen more in the winter time to keep snow off stuff. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Rita McNatt. We live at 220 South Fifth Street, so we sit on our front porch, and that's exactly what we see. We prefer options one or three. No chain link, please. You just clarified the gate access. I would just make the statement that I don't know what size trucks you have coming and going, but we live on a cobblestone street, and we would like to see that preserved as long as possible. So, if access out of Fourth or 38 is the best option, that's what we'd prefer, so. But, welcome. I hope it works out.
Thank you, Rita. Anyone else? Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to comments from the commission.
I have some questions. I'm still a little unclear as to what will be parked within the yellow area and what will be parked outside. Will there be your vehicles parked outside the yellow area?
So, our, the office staff would park outside as they approach work, as they, you know, start their workday down by that number six. I think Dan Olson was talking about the 18 parking spots for the, you know, roughly four employees that we currently have. That's where we would park during the day. After work, we would keep the work trucks. So, as far as our equipment, we're not like earth movers. You know, we're general, we're carpenters, general contractors. So, we have pickup trucks with a trailer that might haul a skid loader, you know, but something that a pickup truck can pull, not heavy earth-moving equipment.
So, if you had like a backhoe, that's going to be in the yellow area?
Yep, yep. But we don't have backhoes. We have skid loaders, you know, they're six, seven feet tall, but we park those in there. Any trailers, you know, because trailers eat up space inside of the building, but really, we want to keep as much stuff in that building as we can. I mean, that's what we're buying it for, to keep stuff inside of it. So, it's just every now and then, we're, you know, you're busy, it's slow in the year, all your stuff's back at the shop instead of on job sites, you know. If that outside storage might be helpful to keep, you know, concrete forms, you know, like I said, we're carpenters, so our stuff goes inside. We're not going to have drywall, you know, wood studs outside. All that stuff has to be inside anyway. It's really just the vehicles, you know, that we might need to keep parked outside if there's not room inside.
Yeah, this is close to the downtown area, which concerns me a little bit, and that's why I think it's important that you keep everything as neat as you can. I like this fence here the best. I guess that's number three.
Okay.
I think it would be the most attractive there and look the best in that area. So, again, there isn't, I don't think there should be traffic going in and out of Fourth Street if you can avoid it, and is that what you're saying, that you won't be using that?
Yeah, probably, probably the Grove Street entrance would be the, if we had a truck and trailer, probably use that one. And then, that Fourth Street entrance might be used every now and then, depending upon the time of the day. You know, obviously, the time of the day is the most important thing with traffic downtown. If a train stopped there, you obviously probably can pull off on the Fourth Street, but the Grove Street access would probably be the most heavily used. And like when I say that, too, heavily used by the four people in the office, maybe guys running back to the shop, you know, every now and then during the day, you know, is, like today, we have jobs in Aurora, Genoa, and Sterling, so we're not even in the area.
Most of your construction activities would be elsewhere, I take it?
Yep.
You aren't going to be manufacturing or putting anything together there?
No, no. It's just storage of vehicles, and it's our home base, and like I said a couple times, the guys don't make money when they're at the shop, so we want to be on the job site.
Okay, thank you.
Trishy?
Yeah, my turn. I already actually talked to Matt about the concerns I had about this, since I own a business that's kitty-corner. My biggest thing was about the fence. I really like number three. I think that one looked good. I'm excited to have neighbors. That property has been empty for so long, and it would be nice to see it used. I used Matt as a contractor doing some repairs to our building, so I know what you guys do and the kind of stuff that I would expect to see there, that for the most part, it's just going to be, it's your shop. And so, that's where the weird stuff that doesn't live on your truck lives. And I think this could be a really good fit. It would be nice to have the landscaping and, Matt, I even brought up my concern about the informal car sales lot that seems to be going on there, and I think this would be a lovely way to end that. But I think this could be a really positive thing, and it's a weird space, and it's a weird building, and it's only going to have so much interest to many people, and I think this would be a good use of that. It's near downtown, but it's still offset enough that I don't think with, with somebody who is careful with their property, I think it would be a nice thing. And it would be exciting to have a little bit more action over where we are. But I would expect to see your bookkeepers parked there, I'm guessing, and occasionally a client or two who wants to come and look at material samples or something like that. But yeah, I think, I like the direction that this is going, so.
Thank you. Trish?
All right. Right. What is a splash plank? You talked about that splash, something at the bottom of the fence. What is that? What is that?
Splash plank, it's kind of more of a farmer term, I think. We farm, too, by the way. Like inside of a building, that's corrugated steel, you would have what you call splash plank, so that's kind of more of where, on the farm, it would keep animals from rubbing on that steel, which would dent it, or, you know, break through that, the thin metal. So, this, it's basically a tongue and groove two-by-four that you stack up off the ground a little bit, so if somebody's walking by and kicks it, it's kind of like baseboard for a wall.
Okay, all right. What, what is the, do you know the cost difference between fence one and fence three?
Fence three would probably be a little bit more, the materials would probably be about the same. Fence three would be a little bit more, just because that's more, fence one is more of a continuous fence, where the building process would be, you know, you snap your line, you set your posts, eight feet on center, and then your horizontal two-by-fours would be nailed to those vertical posts, you know, so you could go 16 feet at a time, whereas option three would be post, framing inside the post, then the metal inside that area, moving on to the next one. So, it would just be, it would be a labor difference maybe of 30% more.
Okay.
And it'd probably be a little bit more material, probably another 15%, 20% more material to trim out the vertical posts.
All right. With the, you, you talked about the size of the vehicles. You're not looking at any semis coming through here or that you know of?
No.
And, because the parking lot, actually, if you're going to have an entrance to that, the back part of your facility, the parking lot could be prohibitive to big vehicles. I don't know how much, how much do you anticipate using the corner for anything?
Which corner would that be?
The corner lot, yeah, Fourth Street.
The big parking lot out front?
Yeah.
Right now, you know, my wife and I kind of talked about when we were kids, or when I was a kid living in town here, there used to be a big, you know, 40-foot-tall evergreen tree that they put Christmas tree lights on, you know, we were kind of maybe kicking, kicking that idea around again, but as far as like vehicles up there, we wouldn't have anything there for now.
Okay, all right. Is there going to be an entrance? We talked about, you know, the traffic of the alleyway. Will there be an entrance through a fence from the alleyway?
We'll make a, some kind of a sliding gate. You see them in some more protective facilities, like maybe out at Comet, or Monsanto, or Bayer, where it's, you know, a big sliding chain link fence that's on rollers, automatically operated. Probably, we could rig something up for that same process, but just cover the chain, the chain link portion with metal siding to have it roll. So, it wouldn't swing into the alley, it would just be like a sliding door.
Okay, so, so that entrance will be utilized?
It'll have the potential to be used if needed.
Okay. The entrance to the, to the taller part of the building, that, is that entrance around the back, too?
There's a, there's a door that would be in, on the alley side of the street, there's an overhead garage door there, and then there's an overhead garage door just across the street that faces this way that would dump out into the front parking lot.
And you probably utilize the back one more?
Actually, it would probably be the front one that we would use more because of just how we talked about the difficulties of getting through that back alley. So, anything that came through that back alley, it would obviously have a timing restraint or consideration when we were to bring something in. And that's, you know, in the construction business that we're in, that's not abnormal. We're used to scheduling deliveries downtown areas, I mean, we have to take all that in account already.
All right. All right, that's, thank you.
I'm glad that you found a good use for the property, and I agree with everybody else insofar as, as long as it's well concealed and well maintained. I think it's a great idea. I mean, and it is, to Trishy's point, it is definitely a strange piece of property from a commercial standpoint, as, you know, since it's been divorced from the Sawyer lot, which actually made sense in that L-shaped configuration. A lot of people have tried to use it over the years, and I don't think anybody's done it successfully, so I would prefer option A or C. I think both are fair, and I understand it's a budgetary constraint, too, but I think it's a great idea. Thank you. Any other comments? With that, I'd like to ask for a motion.
And in the motion, as you can, yeah, just note the motion has the option one on the fence, so if it wants, the commission wants to go to option three, just add that, replace that when you make the motion, the sample motion.
Okay, just may, is an option in the motion.
I think, did, did the builder, did they choose option one, or is that?
Here's option one, that's, option three kind of came after the staff report, so this is option one, and I think most of the commission who did mention it prefer the option three, which is the one up on the screen here.
It is the more attractive of the three.
Yeah.
Did the builder have a preference?
Obviously, the first one's less expensive, but the third one is, it's, and actually, if you look at that fence there, it's ironic that that picture was chosen, because that has an opera gate in it.
Right.
You can see the wheels in the bottom of that longest section in the middle.
Yeah, this is just to show the, kind of what the materials would be, would look like, so generally.
We're, we're fine with either one.
So, in the motion, can we alter that to option?
Sure. Yeah, just say three instead of one in the motion.
All right, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, if you would.
All right, based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its finding of fact and recommend to the city council approval of a zoning map amendment from the CBD, Central Business District, to the PDC, Planned Development Commercial District. Approval of a waiver to unified development ordinance for planned development less than two acres, and approval of a preliminary and final development plan to accommodate a building contractor's office and material storage on the subject site at 421 Grove Street, per the plan dated 5/15/20 and labeled as Exhibit A. Fence detail option three labeled as. What is that labeled as, Dan?
I'm going to say Exhibit B, we'll make it Exhibit B.
Exhibit B and per the conditions listed in Exhibit C.
Motion by Wright?
Second.
Second by Klein. Roll call.
Becker, Buckley, O'Flaherty.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Doe.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Chair Maxwell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. Are there any staff reports?
Just an update, last, our city council action on a couple of projects the commission saw, on April 27th, the council approved the Project Ventus annexation and rezoning and plan approval. Also approved the New Med Cannabis Dispensary at, in the Junction Book Shopping Center was approved, first and second reading at that meeting. Our next commission meeting will be June 3rd. We do have one hearing, and that is a hearing for proposed mixed-use project at Oakland Drive and Sycamore Road, John Pappas called Isaac Suites, so that will be the one hearing on June 3rd, and that meeting will be here in the council chambers. That's all.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Moved by Flaherty, seconded by Wright.
Aye.
All in favor, sorry.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.